Another one, but I'd like to get the other stuff.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have the planes? We can go ahead and start with those. He's on the board.
He might have ball practice.
What's the batteries for the?
I never get here back from them when I called. They never got back with me at all, so I'm wondering if maybe we can just, next time that renewal comes up, I'll pay it. I could try and get hold of them again.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the doctor was, what their duties are.
Yeah, she wasn't very happy that I was asking a lot of questions. I'll do some more calling. I wonder if I take that out of public safety instead of...
Well, that's what I was wondering. That's where my, I was headed.
But we always take the maintenance out of general, and I thought, wonder why we don't take that out of public safety?
Probably I'll be out of public safety. It makes sense.
I'll switch it around.
Do you want to?
We need to use some of that money.
Well, that would be good.
Yeah, which our, year in budget, we were under budget, so which is good for...
You know, I was thinking about this bill that's gonna come to us down here on Walnut Street, where he dug up, and he's got that. That doesn't necessarily have to come out of water.
I wondered about that.
Because that's a drainage tile and all, he's working on the fixtures. But wouldn't, wouldn't have to come out of water. Anytime we have that opportunity, I wanna hear you say it, we can switch, okay?
Yeah. Tell me if you wanna go ahead and look at distance, since you're doing claims. You can see where we're running an actual... And it doesn't help that you waited so long just to make things, to where I'm just picking and choosing every month, is what I'm doing.
Yeah, what is the RNC rebuild product for?
The batteries for that sign.
Oh, for that sign, okay.
They're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just used to car parts.
And I called them to see what the maintenance...
This is the first time we've had to change them?
They were changed in 2013 last, and I don't know if that was under, if it was still under emergency management at the time or not.
But I called her to see what the maintenance covered, and she was very vague and said, I need to talk to another guy that was out west somewhere. And he would get back with me, and he's yet to come back, so I'll have to get back on him. She wasn't very happy. They wanted to try to figure out who told us to change them and why they were changed, and I said, we were told to. Because he had said that they had tested and found out that, you know, they needed new batteries and so...
Did you get your three-butt better?
Well, that's the subject.
You're greater?
Yeah, but I had about thirty meters of pitry today. Because I'm not sure about that other one I've got either. Oh, yeah, okay, strong thing.
Look, there's the balances on the wire for this month.
Which we've had quite a few repairs over the last, it's just...
Well, as you said, Kathy, though, when you do the repairs in one year and then build into the next year...
It's kinda hard.
It hits the budget. It all sucks up.
And that's what's happened right now.
And for the most part, majority of everybody's hanging about. Oh, and this month, Heinz was used only... Something like that or something? I'm like, what happened?
There's one you signed. I heard something about digging.
I did neither. It's not as if they found something that was dripping on Heinz.
Glad it was more than that.
I was like, whoa. I'm not sure John Lawmore may have one out there. I'm not sure what's going on.
Do you not have anything in the budget to carry from last year, some of this stuff?
That's not actually budgeted. Water isn't budgeted.
Then probably it wouldn't be, the difference to that.
Yeah.
Is that an all-time low?
Probably.
I've never seen it, never like it.
I thought that too when I did that. I was like, wow. I thought am I missing something, but... They're just kinda quiet.
Yeah, repairs are hard ones.
Yeah.
We should be getting close to stuff being fixed. Should be getting close to doing that.
Well, I would think so, yeah. And then when you have a leak that you can't find, and you're buying that water just to wear it to drain.
Well, that big one on the east end, that would have like, that's like three bells right there.
The good thing is, our usage is way down. I forget what the average was, eighteen thousand was our average last month.
Eighteen?
Yes.
You sure about that?
What is polling?
Pretty good.
I mean, there's one, March eighth, it was three thousand gallons at all.
And one?
But the day before was nineteen thousand, so, you know, it's filling at midnight or prior to...
So it said, I had one customer that's been running close to fifty thousand gallons a month, and all of a sudden it went to almost nothing, so they must have found their leak or did something.
And it moved, didn't they?
No.
Five hundred and seventy-nine thousand gallons for the month.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, so...
So we're making progress.
I know we had some repairs, but those repairs are now reflecting in.
Right. If you, yeah, they didn't see it. I had to send Tom his already.
Okay. Yeah.
That was March eighteen thousand?
Yeah. Fifteen, what are they, they're down every month?
Eighteen seventy-four.
Uh, the claims for tonight for the water, it was ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, seventy-eight cents. Claims for the town was two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Let me have that person number again. Ten thousand, one sixty-two, and seventy-eight.
Ball practice.
That's what I said.
And you did run, run, run.
Somebody had a great idea that I should coach a softball team.
They're still working on the diamonds. Were you working on the diamonds?
No, I was over at Bloomingdale's.
Oh.
My son's playing at Marshall though.
Oh, really?
So on all my free time, I'm running between baseball and softball, and baseball and softball.
That's gonna go for about the next fifteen years.
I mean, it's between the eyes when you just got here, but any ordinance information on the truck route, what we might do?
They've approved changing it. They directed me to draft it. I'm drafting it. So it's gonna be changed to, I think it's four fifty, I believe, is that what it's for?
That's what Jim told me.
Right.
As far as signage, would you encourage us to wait on signage or put up signage?
I'd go ahead and put up signage.
Okay.
It's not, and they officially said that it's gonna be bad, so...
Okay.
And the county's gonna put up signings up to your town limits.
Good, okay.
There'll be signage down there right off the term, basically, but...
So we need signage.
How do we put it out here, yeah?
Because they shouldn't be getting in to this bar coming up, but we...
Right, there's gonna be signage down there, and if you guys do signage up here, that should cover it.
Okay.
They can't find them until the ordinance is formally adopted, it's signed and published. But I would, you know, I'd go ahead and put signage up. They're not changing their mind on it, so... I reaffirmed, we had a meeting last night, and I reaffirmed with them that that's what they wanted done, and they said yes.
County road four fifty on the forty-one side still has a no semi sign, I would think.
It's gonna come down, that's gonna be the designated truck right now, so...
Right, I just, I didn't know if it'd been overlooked or...
No, they, they haven't formally adopted the ordinance, and so that's why they haven't taken their signs down yet. But it takes a while to get signs to come in, is why I said that you might wanna go ahead and start looking into it.
Okay, I would also like to get some quotes on some street signs that were, were missing here and there that we probably ought to...
Forget signs, we might just check, we might get better deal, forget it from the same place.
Right, yeah, I think hall signs are what we've got. So what I would like to do is just take a look and, and come back to the board with the street sign that we need and get some cost on that. I don't have any other old business. Do you have anything under old business?
Not that's really having developments. I mean, we have small claims cases filed with court dates, and we have ordinance cases filed with court dates. I don't know them off the top of my head, but everything that I have is being filed. It's just a matter of when it goes in front of the judge at this point, so...
This ordinance on building permit, is that a discussable, or what, where are we at on that?
Right, so, I mean, it's discussable. We can talk about it, but...
And that's something that we would have to post or...
It's something, if you might, don't mind, let me look at it again. I wanna check something. Alright, so it can't take effect as far as a penalty until we've published it in the paper. But you guys are able to vote on it. It's that same day, same meeting language, so that's really up to you guys. If you want changes, we can make changes.
Okay.
But it's eligible to be voted on because the language is our unit. They has to be published once the board can penalize anybody.
Okay, and we've had some discussion on this some of the past meetings, and I'm just gonna read through this so that everybody can hear what's in here and also have some discussion if needed. Number one, permits require, no building or structure shall be built, enlarged, moved, or demolished in the town of Marshall without a permit issued by the town of Marshall at least forty-eight hours prior to the time work is commenced. Applications for building permits shall be made to the town of Marshall, clerk treasurer. The permit application shall show the location of the construction, erection, alteration, alteration, installation, or demolition, the name of the owner, his agents, the type of construction, whether timber, masonry, or metal, the size and dimensions, whether it is new, reconstruction, alteration, or demolition. Expiration of the permit. All building permits shall expire by limitation six months after the date of the original issuance, but the limitation shall not apply where work has been commenced within six months from the date of the permit and carried on with reasonable diligence. On permit fees, applicants for building permits must pay the minimum sum of twenty-five dollars to the town of Marshall before a building permit will be issued. Under penalties, any person either as agent, principal, or employee violating any of the provisions of this section shall upon conviction forfeit not more than one hundred dollars in the cost of enforcement of this ordinance, including but not limited to attorney fees. Does that pretty well cover what we had discussed, and you have questions or...
Were you gonna do anything about, because I know we talked something about fences. Is that separate?
It's new construction, and there is some catch-all. When we go to gym, I can tell you what part I think addresses that.
This entails, if you're gonna tear a building down also, is that what I understand?
Okay.
And is it for any size? I mean, if they're gonna put like a little shed out back, is it for that too, or is it...
Does that fall under a structure?
Anything that's good.
That's a structure.
Again, the idea is, don't put that structure on top of a water meter or something that's...
Well, and we get a lot, and I can speak from privately, like as an attorney, but we get a lot of phone calls about people building on the property lines, you know, on the neighbors and things like that. So that can kinda help address some of that too, on top of the utilities and easements and waterways and all of that. But structures is a vague catch-all term that kinda lets us encompass a lot of things.
Anything that doesn't have footers, it's also... If I wanna bring in a shed and drag it in and set it?
Yes, a structure.
Any structure, okay.
Even though it's not a permanent?
Yeah.
Because of shed on...
Shall be built and large altered, moved, or demolished in the town of Marshall, so I'd say that's moved. You're moving a structure.
Even though, because of wood, because of, because, I'm gonna get, because of shed that's ended up, and it's not a permanent shed, it's like it doesn't have a foundation, it's just form and setting, that's not taxable.
We're not classifying it as a permanent structure. We're just saying any structure.
Any structure.
I mean, I can classify as permanent structures that are immovable, but then you're losing a lot of things like, you know, somebody puts a trailer in, or somebody puts a camper in, or somebody puts, you know, a tent and it's made out of, I mean, you know...
I'm just saying, if somebody asks me about it, I'm just, because they're gonna say, well, it's not taxable, so...
Well, we're not saying you can't do it. We're just saying we wanna know, so we can make sure you're not on the waterway, on the utilities, or, you know, on your neighbor's property, and not that it's our job to police that, but, you know...
At least we're trying to help.
Right, it's not that you can't do it, you know?
Right.
And if you don't wanna pay the fee, you can always come to the board and argue your case on the fee, but it's a nominal fee, and it's cheaper than...
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure though.
It's cheaper than what most towns charge.
Because I get what somebody's saying.
Right, but, I mean, the goal isn't to stop people from expanding, it's just inform expansion.
So they put it on theirs, in the right place, and not on town stuff?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot of catch-on here, and again, Jeff has discretion on what he enforces and what he doesn't enforce, or so do I, as far as that with the board's approval. So even though that language is there, if the board deems it not worthy of penalty, then, you know, the, the goal is to at least have a record of what's taking place in town.
I agree.
I mean, it's a small town, and you generally know what's taking place, but you get to know it in advance.
I think that as long as it covers everything, then I'm, I'm good with what it says, I believe.
Would it our benefit to protect our water lines and...
I definitely think that's true.
Water lines and alleyways for utilities and stuff.
And we do incur expenses from damage being done for not enforcing where things are going, or putting it there and they, oh, shoot, I just damaged the water meter.
And that gets us some teeth there too, if they do that and they damage it. Not only can you make them pay to replace whatever it is, but there's a penalty involved too for having done it, so... But the penalty makes it so we have to publish it and run it for thirty days, or publish it once and let thirty days go before we can enforce it.
Do I have a motion to, go ahead and accept this ordinance?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and accept the ordinance.
Second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept the ordinance requiring a burning building permit, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You want that dated the day then?
Yeah, I would. There's a section for same day, same meeting, and then there's a section approving it.
And then three signatures?
Yeah, on each, yeah. I think there's a yay or an a section at the back. My memory's not what it used to be.
Getting old.
Well, we've had that a little while.
It kinda surprised me with the direction.
Back on, back on forty years, you won't even know what day of the week it is.
I just drive it over here, I was like, oh man, I hope there wasn't anything I was supposed to be in today. She's got a list, so she'll get me.
No, I have a list for you and I really.
I didn't remember drafting that, that's why I wanted to look at it.
But you sent it to me, like, I'm gonna say, like, right after the last meeting that I had.
I had it drafted, I'm pretty sure. I just didn't bring it to the last meeting. I may give you a new contact at my office also.
Oh, okay.
In case you need anything.
Okay.
Anything else under old business, anyone? Maybe one of the new businesses. We are going to have youth association playing games here in Marshall, and they, they being the youth association, is doing a lot of extra work up here, and they've really dressed up the diamonds and trying to fix some things that have really weathered pretty badly over the last year. But there was a sinkhole that developed in right field of the upper diamond, and so as soon as I found out about that, I got ahold of Ronnie Black Senior. He came and looked at it, and he said, it's a broken pipe, it's down probably three and a half, four feet down. And so it's probably...
Thanks, I didn't need to do that.
Eight-inch diameter hole. And, uh, so they're going to fix that tomorrow. So it's, it's got a cone on it and a piece of plywood on it. Keep kids out of it, but it should be fixed tomorrow. We also have three bleacher boards that need to be replaced on the lower diamond set bleachers. And so with your permission, I'll go ahead and acquire those three bleacher boards. They're two-by-ten by twenty-foot long boards. Blair Mathis thought she might be able to get enough help just to paint those all the same color, so that's what I'm hoping for. So with your permission, I do not have a cost per board, but I'll go out here to the Amish and talk to them about that.
Well, they got the better boards out there, they, they are, but just be prepared what the price is.
Oh, I, I, yeah.
I've shot there before.
No, I mean, just lumber and period.
Cheaper than anywhere else, and it's better.
Yeah, it's just lumber itself, it's just tie.
Someone was telling me the other day, kind of off the subject, they had agreed to build a new home, and the price changes since they agreed a couple of months ago into today, it's gone to fifty thousand dollars.
They won't quote you that price?
No, and so it's, yeah, it's kinda scary, but we, we gotta fix them, and we gotta make those bleachers safe, so... I'll go ahead and get that taken care of. The youth association is getting quotes for repairing the chain-link fence on the outfield of the upper diamond. Some reason at some time, someone has actually cut that section of fence out. And I don't know whether it was for egress from the baseball field, or I don't know what happened to it, but when they did, one of the posts is now broken, and then you go on down all the ways, and there's another post broken. So the youth association's going to work on that and gets, gets quotes to get that fixed. I have no idea why that was ever cut.
Is there a gate where they get a mower in there?
There is a gate, there's a gate facing west that just comes straight in from the, like, the basketball court area. Yeah, there was no reason for it, and I can see for that to be cut.
Did they move the field there, or is it, do we have somebody that moves it?
We have, the town, that someone does all the work.
So that's part of the moving process?
Yes.
Can you say it's on the lower diamond?
That, that's on the upper diamond. The bleacher boards are on the, on the lower.
Okay, the fence is on the upper.
The fence is on the other, the lower diamond looks in good shape. And they hauled a lot of agro lime in, they worked all that up, taken all the grass and accumulation of that off. They have taken the netting down, the batting cage, and cut in all, cut out all the trash and weeds and the trees and everything. So they've really done a lot of work there. So that just brings you up to speed on, on that. Restroom concession stand is all, water's turned on, everything's ready to go there for them. The restrooms are all, have been cleaned. The next thing I have on my list is town cleanup date. We've mentioned that?
Yes.
At one of the past meetings, and Kathy, did you get any information?
Yes, she said, pretty much anything's available, and that we use, she said, two dumpsters, they were three-ton, and they were three hundred and seventy dollars per dump, or they are now. So whatever you guys want right now, when I talked to her this morning, anything was available.
Three hundred and seventy dollars per dumpster?
Yes, and it's a three-ton level dump. And she said, we, after that first year, we were good the next time, so we didn't go for that.
Yes.
So she said, just give her a call back whenever we decide our dates and...
Okay.
Montezuma's doing theirs on May first, by the way.
Okay.
She's a savvy idiot.
Yeah, well, there have been conflicts in years past with other towns, and they didn't have enough dumpsters, so that was...
Because on that shed was Paris, and it was on like the nineteenth of April, which I said that was off the quick for us to get the papers advertised.
How about a three-ton one? How many can be carried?
Well, that's what I was...
Is that a big one, or it doesn't sound very big?
It's not the, she says, the next one down.
I think that's a thirty-yard dumpster.
Okay, that's pretty exciting.
Yeah, I think the forty is those great big high side. I think so, yeah.
I was thinking maybe there'd be a manage to do it on the same day as them, and trying to market it.
Yeah.
Especially if you give a third community doing it.
Has Rockville said anything about doing one yet?
They did say one, but I don't remember what it is.
That way you don't get those people coming and using our dumpsters.
I'll text them and see, maybe I'll get anything.
Any thoughts on dates, do you... I have talked to Jeff Randy, and as he is visiting properties, he's gonna inform them on this date, the dumpster will be here. Great time for you to clean your property up and use the dumpsters.
Any limitations? Just everything goes in the dumpster?
No, we have limitations.
Yeah.
I mean, no oil, paint, no tires, those all, yeah.
Will there be accommodation for metal, or is everything just going in?
Did we have?
We did one year, but that was a miss.
Somebody was wanting to pick it up, and that all I thought.
Yes, but...
And they asked.
If we don't have any takers, in the hopper, I'd say.
Yeah, it's in the hopper, because we ended up, was able to get somebody to do appliances, too, didn't we, or something?
We did it one time.
Way over there somewhere, and then it sat there for a little while, and then somebody else took it off or something.
Rockville's May fifteenth.
Okay.
And that mother's, unless it's Saturday.
That's the weekend after. I was just looking to see...
Get Mother's Day present, you can call.
And I don't mind, if you was gonna do different, I'm thinking of... And I don't mind if you want to do different, I'm thinking of.
Rocky Mother's Day.
It's on Saturday.
Picks it up, takes it, sells it for scrap. If you, if that's what we want to do, we'd have to work it out.
Yeah, check with them and see.
And he's going to have to cut the leases.
No.
Is May 1st bad? Good? Indifferent?
May 1st is fine.
Okay. See anything wrong with May 1st? It's okay.
Good, sort of better.
That'll get Jeff time to, at least to get stuff out and so.
And when, what were the times that we did that? Do you remember?
No, you didn't tell me. Look for that. That's been two years ago. Cause we didn't do it last year.
Wasn't that what it was?
What?
10 to 2 or something like that?
We did it later than 2.
I don't know, you spent some time up there that day.
I did. I mean, I stayed until whenever.
Yeah.
But it moved later than 2.
Until like 4?
How long you want to stay?
I mean, these people will clean up, I can stay.
You don't have everybody associated with the promiscuous, do you? Your kids, the grandkids aren't that old yet, are they?
Oh, they're not that old.
Just checking.
I don't know if 10 to 4 enough.
That sounds good.
What's grab?
10 to 4.
Sounds good to me.
But I think they're gonna be pretty well done.
They will be.
And I'll put a, do you want to put a thing, do we want to put a separate little ad in the paper when it gets closer then? Probably. I think that's what we did before, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
It probably went in the community information.
So no tires?
No tires, no paints, no oil, electronics. What else?
Resin.
Resin, someone.
Monzuma did put that on their flyers.
And that's Marshall only. Yeah, we ran into that one time, issues.
No mattresses, that's what we would put, yes.
Do you want to take mattresses?
They just take up a lot of room.
We see what I've seen around, just laying around.
It's mattresses, yeah. And I'm okay if we have the dumpster space. I have some stuff down the corner.
Yeah, I saw that today. I was like, Lord, help us. That's what I'm sitting here thinking like.
Fucking good making it to here.
And that what, we're gonna make sure we don't exclude it on our list so we can get it cleaned up.
I believe what we used last time was the flyer that Rockville put out and we just almost verbatim put the same information in there.
All right, I'll get a little tiny and.
The main thing is tires, appliances, TVs, paint, tires and oil.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so that's May the 1st from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. for the town cleanup. And it's for Marshall residents only.
And then what did they break those on Friday? Well, we put them inside the locker area?
We put them inside the gates on, yeah, they brought them on Friday.
Okay.
And I think that worked out a lot better. Controlled than just adding them out here to the side.
Okay.
Cause we didn't have anybody late at night. Darkness, definitely there.
Anything else on that?
Not on that.
Okay. Kenny Ryan called me. He's gotten calls on hauling water for some pools. Last year, our price was $15,000 a thousand for the water, plus then the fire department charges for the actual hauling and they, they make a little money off of that for the hauling. I know our $15 is a little higher than some other communities, but what we looked at was what costs we have in it and I think we're still safe at $15,000 a thousand for that.
Rockville's raising their water rates too for that, but they haven't set a new rate.
Okay.
Cause they're the cheapest in the area, I think, but.
Yes.
But that one's going up, so.
Well, we could work on a kickback system. If we get ours high enough, they'll have to go to Rockville. Be all the way around.
I don't know what Rockville's cost, I'm just saying it's going up.
Are you fine with leaving it at 15? Are we fine to continue to, to a lot of water to be hauled for pools?
Yeah.
Don't say well, but I mean.
And I know they haul for wells and things of that type, so. Okay.
Well, well, it's over priority, but.
Yes. $15,000 a thousand, Kathy. That's all I have on my list, so let's see what board has. Anything new?
No, I was just curious if Jeff got any updates on the stuff up there at the Rainbow Factory.
Yes, he did. And I was hoping, he has someone coming to haul this semi away. He could have already, he's meeting his arrangements and he was supposed to be here about right now to report on that, so.
Because I gave him the guy's name and I called him and said that he was gonna call because they were gonna need the legal papers for it. There he is.
Okay, so he's about right now.
Yeah, you were good.
We're ready for your report.
Hmm, let's see.
Semi.
Semi should be gone this week, so I talked to Leanna, they will, I've got to set up a time to meet with them so I can get in the impound paperwork and everything, explain that to them. I've got a few properties to take care of, get those here in the next couple of weeks. And the Knicks got paperwork for me at the office or. It's a debt collection thing we're having trouble getting service on.
Okay.
So that, it's just the service and I thought since you're around town, it'd save the town some money if you served instead of the sheriff department.
Can we get a handle on what's going on down East End? That mess.
It's getting worse.
You're talking about on the East End?
Yeah. Did you go to court with them?
No, I.
They are cleaning that up, correct, after you spoke to them?
Yeah, I had a pretty good talk with them. They've been working, from my understanding, they've been working on it. We still should be getting a court date, that way we can still go to court and you get it taken care of and if he gets it cleaned up, finishes getting it cleaned up, then it's great.
Does that mean he has to plant grass out front and get all the water taken care of?
Yeah.
He's really decimated that place.
Yes, he has.
Yeah, I would hate to be a neighbor.
I have something I was gonna ask. On sidewalks, the new sidewalks, is there anything to have people kind of, like sweep them off, especially the grass and stuff, kind of?
We plead, plead and ask and.
Has Rockville passed something where if you shoot your grass clippings into the street, it's a punishable offense? I don't remember if we put that language in our ordinance we did on the yards or not. I'd have to look. But in Rockville, they have an ordinance prohibiting shooting your grass clippings into the street.
Danger. It's a danger, but.
They're worried about the motorcycles, yeah. I don't remember if we put that language in when we did our ordinance on the grass height and that language might be in it, but I don't recall for sure.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But that's, that's an option, I mean. If you can shoot me a mess, tell where it is.
I'm just saying just around. I agree when you walk, you just kind of notice things.
Yeah.
I think it's just because it's nice new sidewalks and people going.
The only, the only thing I know right now is parking on.
That's big.
I haven't seen any lately. We had a problem on the north end that was taken care of, so.
How long ago?
Six, eight months ago. Might be, well, there's two places on the north end. So one's kind of in the middle, one is farther north. So is it the one in the middle again?
That was the one I saw a couple of times, yes. Not only on it, but across straddle the whole.
Yeah.
And it's just.
They got the rest out front.
They have a driveway, they don't use it. I don't know, I'm good.
Did you make a phone call to the owners of the house here on North Main Street? This being redone?
Yes.
Did you get any satisfaction?
Yes. I followed up after the last meeting on that property that had been crossing Federated Church that they started remodeling. I talked to the person we thought was going to do the work and he's not doing the work. It's his ex that owns the property. And so I did talk to her and told her our concerns and she assured me that they were going to, to get back on that property. I did see some action there one or two days after that, but then I've not caught anybody that sits there. How much pressure do we want to put on them and?
I've got several, a big list that I made and I've got to check back. I plan on being up Sunday again, so I'll check back those properties and if I, I've seen no progress, I'll just tag them. That'll give us 30 days and then I'll check back right before that. And if they still haven't got anything, I'll bring it to you, see if you want to turn it over and enter it.
And I know there, well, I should say, no, I'm pretty sure there's animals living underneath the house there too. They were talking about kittens there this winter and so that's just housing that.
But the person I talked to was very, very good about it, said he understood that it needed to be taken care of.
Get it back together.
Is that according to the ex-husband, no?
Then what about property next door? They said the grass is getting tall on that.
It's not bad. I just checked it today.
Okay. Is there any indication of when they're gonna need to start?
Haven't talked to them, haven't met the person that bought it.
That's why I said I had no clue.
I don't know.
Don't have a clue.
Okay. And then, oh, since I'm on subject topic, I looked at the house over here where he asked what happened into the, there is a storm drain dried out front next to his water meter.
Right, okay. So he's just gonna run that drain?
So, yeah. So that, you have no problem with that?
She's talking about the house south of Ronnie Elderman's, right across from the fire.
They're out there digging alongside the perimeter right now.
The perimeter drain and running it over to the ditch out front.
Okay.
I see no problem with that. I mean, there, there has some accumulation of water underneath and around the foundation. They want to get rid of it. I think that's, that's fine. And we have that 11 inch tile that runs.
Down the portion that's there, they use it.
Yeah, so I agree with that.
Okay. And.
And that is free flowing, isn't it? Yeah, it is real good.
Okay. My handheld has quit on my meter reader.
Really?
Yeah. So Scott came up from utility supply and.
This is my good news, I can tell where you're headed.
And so you can't, it won't even synchronize with it. So he first thought it was a battery. Well, we just replaced the battery. Well, that's, after he got up here, it's not the battery. Those, they're not even making anymore. They went and bought all the parts they could find for them to refurbish. We can send it in and have it refurbished to the sum of about $600. No guarantee whether it lasts a month, whether it lasts a year, two years. It's 14 years old. They are switching at the end of the month, at the end of the year. Utility Supply is, or excuse me, Neptune is who does our meter base and utility supply works with them. They are doing away with the program we have now.
Yeah, it's just that's.
Because Flash Player is what it is based off of and Flash Player is no longer.
It's gone away.
Right, it has gone away. He said, we will help you, but if there's any computer problems that we can't solve, then he said, you're in trouble.
Yeah, you are.
We currently pay $2,500 a year for annual support for utility supply. If we go to this Neptune 360, it's $3,500 a year, so $1,000 more. I've already paid for this year, so if we jump over and we'll go with Neptune 360, I will be prorated a credit for whenever we switch on for the remainder of the year.
So plus the cost of the reader?
We've already put the, we put the big cost out. We already got that belt clip.
Okay.
So the belt, and that's what he said, that was, that was good.
Okay.
Right. The belt clip will work. The next thing is it's got to be hooked up to either a phone or an iPad. It's hooked up to my iPad right now. So I will have to be using my data and stuff, so I'll have to figure out something there for the time being until down the road, we can do something.
Cause you can't, and it will say like you can't.
You have to, the program is on here.
No, but I'm saying you can end up in, once you end up and you use your belt clip and you go around and collect, can you end up and take it to where you can use a regular internet connection and download all that without having to use your?
Well, I'll have to, everything, the program is on here.
It's on there, so.
But then this will go to the computer, is my understanding. And it's all gonna be iCloud based.
Right.
So it won't be on my hard drive. So that's gonna upload then from here over there. Cause see, there's no, wouldn't be apps over there.
But laptops have apps, the newer ones, with the app on a laptop.
But I can't tell, I mean, I'm not gonna take that laptop out with me to read all these meters.
So the belt clip doesn't store?
No.
That it just goes ahead and it collects and then it sends it over to the app?
It goes on here. Cause here, we went the other day on our customer that we're gonna have problems with and read his meter. Where's my? And. It comes on here and I can put, it'll read all meters.
Right.
But to do a data log for a leak, it'll only read the new meters. But to get my water set down, it'll read all meters. This.
I'm still wanting this thing. Come on. Not my data log. Because he can get down to the exact day of, and time where he had his leak on this thing. If I can get it done.
Are you needing an iPad that has data on it or something with data on it? Is that what you're saying?
I honestly, I don't know what I need.
I was gonna say, because we could actually.
I'm assuming, yes.
Out on that, because I tether my computer in the car to my phone, but the town is eligible for FirstNet through the police department. We could get that. The iPad is gonna be about $500 and then the data plan for unlimited data off that iPad is, using it as a hotspot is 40 or 50 dollars a month. If you, the town itself, I don't believe you can get FirstNet without the police department.
They can't. First is bonkers. Fire department, I'm a police, I believe.
Yeah, and you're gonna be paying for unlimited data or even a data plan of 60 to 80 bucks on for that.
So you're saying an iPad that you would use and.
I could, we could leave it in the office and then when I go to leave.
Well, see, I would have to have it every night to go read the pumps.
And that's fine, all.
But I don't want to come up here every night to get that to go read the pumps. See, that's the other thing. I mean, if I have to come uptown to go, I mean, that's just an inconvenience for me cause I keep that thing with me in my vehicle. If I'm going to town for supper, I go read it. If I'm out somewhere and come back in town, I read it.
Okay.
But I don't mind. I have unlimited data, but it's just the fact that down the road, I'm not gonna be supplying the town to slow down the rest of my data.
Right.
If we go.
Well, you could end up and even run it on both, right?
But.
You could run, you could run the app on both. Like if you have a sign on, you could run them on both. Like we got one, so then she could always have that one when she needs to go out to the meter and then when she's going around town with the meter.
Cause I would, the only time that I could need it is when I was working. That way I could power my, or you know, have data from my computer and not have to use mine. So other than that, I mean, if he was gonna go out of town, but otherwise I could just stop and grab it at your house or whatever else.
Um, which way?
We could even use the phone and, yeah, I mean, if you can use it on an iPhone, you can do that either or, it doesn't matter.
And I don't, I honestly don't know what's gonna entail down the road, cause he's not been here to show me. He's just shown me how to collect data on this and how to go read a meter.
But you gotta sign on. When you go in, so when you.
I don't know. No, I don't sign on here. No, it just goes right into the app.
Okay.
So see, I don't know what I'll do when I get to the computer because I can't down, I can't do anything over there yet.
So that's what I'm thinking, he's got some stuff.
Okay. There's something that, yeah, I'm gonna, I assume I'm gonna sign into an iCloud based program somewhere.
You will.
Yes, yes. This is going to collect everything. And then I'm gonna have to go to the computer and then I, I don't know if it's gonna send it and then it's gonna come back to the computer. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Now, he emailed all the data to my email over there when we did that leak.
Is this temporary till you get your machinery built, your reader?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I'm getting by, but it's just like today, I had to, I had to read when I did my town meters, but there's like 30 of them that didn't read.
Well, what's the timeline on getting your reader back?
I don't know, cause they haven't done anything with it, cause I didn't tell them to do anything with them, cause.
Because it's, will make go, will it still be available if we go to the Neptune 360?
No, that'll go, that's history.
Right. But that means, that means your meter, you have to use the belt clip, like what you have to use there.
I have to use the belt clip. I have to use the belt clip with this, which is what we have.
Right.
What is the Neptune three sixty?
It's the new program.
Not the meter?
No, it's the new, it's the new billing program.
It's a new billing program.
And you use the belt clip with, in conjunction?
To read instead of that big handheld thing that we have.
Because the big handheld thing won't work with that.
So we may not rebuild the old one?
We don't need to rebuild the belt clip.
But it's compatible with our meters, right?
Yes, it will read all of the meters, yes. It will read all of the meters. But we can only data log, find leaks and everything with the new meters, which that's, yeah, cause I question that.
Which I thought we knew that, until they all got replaced, all the meters eventually got replaced.
I, I knew that, but I wanted to make sure that, cause that belt clip, I wanna make sure that he didn't admit that whole belt clip wouldn't read the old meters.
Right, as long as the belt clip is reading the old meters, I don't see why we would get the handheld thing fixed.
It's just the fact of, we've gotta put out thirty-five hundred dollars that we don't really have right now, because he said you may not get your credits on your twenty-five hundred until the end of the year, that'll be prorated, even though we sent it down.
Because we're gonna be stuck having to go over to it anyways.
No, we don't have to, it's just that Neptune's not guaranteeing that they'll be able to help us at the end of the year.
Right.
Or Utility Supply, they're gonna try and do the best they can.
But it's going away.
Right.
And you don't usually get support very well once things have been...
Right, that's what he said, but he said, I can't say, he said, you know, you may refurbish that handheld, and it may be fine for another year, two years. He said, you know, I don't know, he said, that's just it, we don't know.
Is your concern use of your tablet and data, is, is that where we're at?
I don't know how much data it's gonna use, but no, I, I don't have a, that's the reason we put it on here to begin with. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'm just gonna make sure you guys don't have a problem with me using it, knowing that I'm using it. And that down the road, eventually, we'll have to look at doing something.
Right.
We don't have to do that right now, no. But I'm concerned about putting the thirty-five hundred dollars out, but I'm also concerned about refurbishing that old handheld, and the one I have isn't the best, because I'm having trouble getting it to read the meter down at the tower every night.
Does that thirty-five hundred have to come out of the water account sooner or later?
Sooner or later, yes, because it's water.
And how much do you say it's gonna cost to fix the handheld?
You're gonna spend twenty percent to get a thing fixed that's not worth fixing, maybe, because of no warranty? Put that twenty percent on the new one and get the new one?
That's where I'm going with it.
It's twenty percent to get the old one, and it'd still be questionable, if they can find the parts.
And like I say, Utility Supply's broken, he'll do whatever he wants.
For a couple of months, really easily.
So the thirty-five hundred dollars is only a thousand more than what we normally pay? So we're talking about a thousand?
Right, right.
Okay.
Right. But we could, yeah. And we'll, we'll get a credit back of roughly twelve hundred plus dollars, cause...
But right now, we're only gonna be out the difference minus twelve hundred, or the thousand.
Well, we may not see that twelve hundred till the end of the year.
Right, but it's gonna be...
Cause he couldn't guarantee me when I'd see it.
She's already paid the twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
So you would pay a thousand more now?
I'd pay thirty-five hundred more now. I have to pay for a new maintenance under the three sixty, I have to...
It's a rebate, you have to pay for it upfront, and then you'll send it the other way.
Do you have to pay it yearly though, or can you pay it monthly?
Well, we've always paid it yearly, it's never been...
Plus the payment, you do it that way.
No, he said I'd have to pay thirty-five hundred dollars upfront, but then I will get a credit back.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, but he doesn't know when, because he said, "I'm not in the financing part to know exactly when that comes back and how they're doing all that."
This is with the program and everything, the thirty-five hundred?
Uh, he said, "I'll be stood up and ready to roll."
Yeah, with a pocket clip reader.
Yeah, we put that money out, so he said, "You put the big investment out first."
But I'm like, Barry, I don't, I don't see any reason to put the money out to repair something that's antiquated.
And that's what I told him, I, I agree, but I said, you know...
It's been a pretty good reader, but it's...
Fourteen years old.
Yeah, I think we've got the best out of it.
And they couldn't believe that the batteries they replaced here a couple of years ago was the original batteries. And he said even to look at it, he said, "It's not abused, it's not tore up, it's not scratched, it's not," he said, "You'd be surprised." But I said, "We don't walk around, we don't, you know, it's not dropped and..."
Then I suggest you go ahead and pay the thirty-five hundred, and let's get it fixed where it's usable, and we've got confidence in it. We don't wanna come back and revisit it if we try to rebuild something.
Right, and be in the same problem in a month from now, trying to read meters, and, cause I was panicking last week on what I was gonna do.
All that's based on if they can find the parts, isn't that right?
Yeah, cause they don't even know what's wrong with it, for sure.
Yeah, so, just...
It's not sinking, it's not, you click on the screen, it's not doing anything.
I think it's time to put that away and go ahead and bring it to the newer system and...
And they'll come, he said, "They'll come and help me," and they'll be, which, I would just call them, they're here. That's the nice thing.
Well, I think we're in agreement then, go ahead with the thirty-five hundred, and, uh, let's, let's just...
And then we'll keep in mind with you down the road, once I know more what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, did you have anything else for the town?
The issue we have with the yard that's been taken care of just south of us.
Good, okay.
That ditch, what is the town's stance on that ditch? Cause I know we was gonna clean that out, and I hate, I don't know if it's been done yet, last I knew it, and you know what I'm talking about?
I made contact after that meeting where the homeowner was here the next day, and asked that it be cleaned out, and that company has never cleaned it out.
Okay.
I still would intend to do that, but I don't have a backhoe and a...
And I, and I understand that, I just hate to go down there and they should have a citation without...
And I guess, but the, the only thing that I can think of is to, to bring somebody else in to do that.
Okay.
Because I, the company we use regularly is just so, so busy, they can't, they won't get to it.
Hopefully we don't have that problem that I, I'm a veteran, I would have that.
Well, I have an idea of someone maybe to, to do that, and bring them in, and they, they're in the excavator.
Okay. I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to talk to him, see if they'll be civil and understand, and, and it's not the one on the north side, it's the one that's
Yeah.
not taking care of the property, so...
Right, okay.
Is the dirt over here supposed to go back here?
No.
I was gonna say, no.
No, that, that's, that's just waste.
I was gonna say, and no update on the back here?
Here? That's an ongoing conversation, yes. Um, how about the, down the street where the sump pumps pumping into the front yard?
I want to come back Sunday.
Perfect.
Oh, I see, the drains run out. They have it pulled off the sidewalk right now, but that's like that other, like, couple houses down. Do you notice their drain comes right to the edge of the sidewalk and then paddles?
That's one I've found, yeah.
No, I mean, it's like buried in the ground, until you see, okay, well, then on down. Let me see, which house? They've ended up, and they've run, they've actually, half a hose ran out, and they kinda had it watered up the other day, but they must be using it to pump out, even, maybe in the street.
See, there's, there's nothing that I can do about that, other than on the sidewalk, it's causing, creating a hazard.
Yeah.
So...
Why don't you pump it up to the east instead of the west?
That's been a suggestion.
I thought the other one was supposed to run a drain out.
You got the same answer I do, other than... So...
Other issues?
I'm aware of.
Are we ever, and I, I know this sounds like a smart out of town, are we ever gonna get anywhere with this mess over here, in your opinion? I mean, it's, I get hit ten times a week on, why is the town allowing that to go on? I said, we don't...
I mean, there's already a fine issue. We have the option under that statute to have it corrected and bill them for that. I mean, I'd want the judge's approval before doing that, but that's gonna be a substantial bill.
Couldn't afford that.
Right.
A guy in town would like to buy it. There's a guy in town that'd like to buy it.
Yes?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know.
I doubt if he would wanna give twenty thousand dollars or anything like that, but he would like to have it.
What I would just suggest is that we have a proceeding supplemental, serve the, the owners again, and see about recovering the fine from other areas, like maybe a lien on their personal property, or their house, or, you know, car title. Cause I know they have assets that can have liens placed on them, and that might put a little pressure on them. Um, that's really the only recourse I have, besides somebody funding to fix it. So that's what I would suggest is...
And the only fines are what the judge imposes?
Right. That we could have it put on as a lien on the property, or on any property they have, would be what I would suggest. That if we get a lien on their personal property they care about, like their house, that might change things. But that's really the only teeth we have at this point. So that'd be my suggestion, it's gonna be bad.
It, it's just very frustrating, and it's gone on for years and years, and the judge has made a ruling, and they just thumb the nose at the ruling.
So, that's what I'd suggest, is bring them back to court on a proceeding supplemental, ask for a lien to be imposed on their, their house, and hopefully the judge would go for that, and maybe that would make the people that own the property do something.
I'd like to see that happen, okay.
I would too. What happens if, um, the judge ended up and decides that it's not, then will we be stuck with just the, not able to take them back to court again?
No, no, we can still go back to court. The, what happens in those cases, if the judge determines there aren't assets, that's when you're in trouble. There's assets, cause, I mean...
Right.
It's just a matter of what he's willing to do. And say, "Look, Judge, it's been this amount of time, and this is where it stands, and it's been like this for the last six months or eight months," and, I mean, they stopped working on that last September, I think, or August or so, maybe. Might be even longer than that.
I don't think that during the COVID, I don't think they will.
I don't think they worked on it for that long.
Would that be three years this spring, or... So I, I, I mean, I could tell you when we tell them to court, but...
Is it spring?
It's been a long time.
But that, that's what I'd suggest, a lien on all of the real estate.
What, I, I would support doing that, and, and let's, let's get to some kind of conclusion on this property.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's, it looks bad, but I still think there's some dangers there. There are dangers of a building that's gonna collapse.
I'd hark under it, but, you know, I, I pretty well know who to sue if it falls on my toes, so...
Do they own the gray lawnmower down there?
Yes.
Because I know this is starting to go...
Starting?
Well, I mean, it's, I seen siding, well, I seen decent siding all the way off, so it's like...
That's never been...
On the north end?
Yeah. There's a big dumpster down there.
They stolen that?
If you can't use the property, you need to give, sell it to somebody or give it to somebody else.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I'm like, cause they're not sending to that, so...
I know this is my third year on the board.
Was that four?
It was there about a year before I went here, I think, is what you told me when I got here. And since then, we got our judgment and the judge's order, but...
But it happened in spring of eighteen.
So when would that be?
I bet it was spring eighteen, or spring of seventeen. I don't remember when.
When did you start?
I've been here, this is my second year here, I think. I started in twenty nineteen. Nineteen or twenty.
I bet it's three years.
Cause I thought John ended up retired the first of the year.
Right, so I think I started in January of nineteen.
So that happened in eighteen.
Must have, yeah. And then we got the judgment in twenty, and then, that's what's happened, or into nineteen. But that's why I'd suggest that, that's really the only recourse I can see, cause as far as renovating that, that's probably gonna be substantial, I would assume. Which, they must be paying their taxes, cause it hasn't sold a tax sale, so... Cause if they sold a tax sale, then the owner could do something, but...
Thought I could find that date, but, let me call that. Okay.
But, people seem to care when you put a lien on the things that, you know, if it's...
The board to them.
Right, and they obviously don't care down there.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, so...
That's what I'd suggest, so I can do that if that's, that's what we want.
Yes, I think that's what we want. Jeff, anything? Kathy?
Just sign those adjustments.
Okay.
And put those in. You could just sign them off, it'll be up real.
Yeah, it was June, it was May of twenty eighteen.
Yeah, and sign us the second of June, like, nineteen, right?
Okay, no one has anything else, we'll stay in the term, thank you.